All right, welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Our CFO, John D'Nizio, is at the capital planning committee meeting and will not be joining us.
Yeah, that was another live.
He will be joining us late. And Dr. Bodie and Rob Spiegel are away at other events, so it's just us tonight. So, the first thing I want to let everybody know about, it's, this is from the Addison sixth and now seventh graders, and this is from Carly Newell. "It is my pleasure to once again present you with a calendar for two thousand and eighteen. It was done last spring after finishing the tobacco lessons in the sixth grade. Presently, these students are in seventh grade. On the inside of the calendar, you'll see the names of the winners. I am always so proud of the creativity and the wonderful messages that the children share. It is difficult for the committee to select thirteen students out of over four hundred entries. That's a lot of entries. We hope that you will enjoy using your new calendar. The two thousand and nineteen calendar will focus on vaping, the dangers of using e-cigarettes." And this is from Mrs. Newell, Ms. Newell, and the sixth, now seventh grader. So, just for the public, this is the calendar. You can see it right there. It's about educating people about lung disease, tobacco usage. And there are, each calendar, each month, there's something designed by, whoops, by one of the students in the sixth grade last year, and then now all seventh graders. So, we congratulate these young people and their teacher and the staff for raising awareness of this issues, of this issue, and beautiful art that they did inside, so.
Really nice.
It's on everyone's desk. Take it home, put it up, and follow their direction. All right.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask the assistant superintendent just to convey our appreciation of this and the work well done?
Thank you very much, I will do so.
Well done. Okay. Any public participation?
No.
Seeing none. We appreciate the studio audience being here tonight, though.
[laughing]
Very grateful for your attendance. And, so, we're gonna bring up Mr. McNeil to do a presentation on the MCAS results. We have a microphone issue, and we don't have a microphone over there. Apparently it was damaged, and so, Mr. McNeil is gonna speak from here, and he's gonna give us a presentation on the MCAS.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just to reiterate that the spring, this past spring, students in grades three through eight took the Next Generation MCAS two point oh. Some objectives for the presentation tonight is just to review the two thousand and seventeen district-wide Next Generation MCAS data. Give some definition of the achievement levels, which is really a review of what I covered the last time. I just wanted to make sure I refreshed everyone's memory on that. Give a definition of the student growth percentile, which will be something, some reports and some graphs will show that percentile, and to entertain any questions regarding the data. So, just as, to review, the Next Generation MCAS is, was designed to replace the twenty-year-old legacy MCAS that was in place. It was geared to measure critical thinking skills, application of knowledge, and a student's ability to make connections between reading and writing. The accountability, this elementary and middle schools, or any school that participated in the Next Generation two point oh, did not receive a, an accountability rating. However, the high school did, because they took the legacy test in grade ten. And this is a review of the achievement levels. You see the difference between, in the doing, in the legacy MCAS, it was advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and for the Next Generation, we have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. So, here's a definition of SGP, which is calculating, based upon the student's history of taking the test, how much they grow from one year to the next. And then, I just won't go through, but that's basically what it's used, utilized for. So, we use that to see where, you know, different groups of students are growing. And here is a range of the SGP levels. Generally, between zero and thirty-nine is considered low growth. Forty to sixty is moderate growth, and sixty-one to ninety-nine is where you have high growth. So, we're gonna get into some of the district results. You know, the way that you see the graphs right here is we're comparing how each grade did versus the state. I did show this during the last presentation. So, you'll see there that the, the blue lines are the district results, and the state are the red lines. And generally, we scored, there's a, a big disparity to how the district did, did much better than the state. However, you'll see there in third grade is an area that we wanna focus some of our attention and figure out, you know, what's going on there, because there's not that big of a disparity between how we did and the state. I'll go into the next slide. And so, here we're getting into the growth percentiles. As you see amongst the, the comparison between the district results and the state, you'll see we're generally in the moderate to high range, as, as between that forty and sixty range. So, we're pretty happy with that. However, we don't wanna rest on our laurels. We wanna continue to improve in those areas, and as we continue to take, have experience taking the test, I, I'm sure that that will happen, and we can use the data to inform our instruction. Right here, we're looking at the district and state on math. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't delineate back here. This is the ELA. This is the achievement levels. This is the growth percentile, so that's how the, the information is being presented. So, right now, we're showing the slide where the math achievement levels. You'll see where, you know, sixty-one, as you look at third grade, sixty-one percent of our population of students scored in advanced, or I won't say advanced, but meeting or exceeding expectations. And you see that comparison with the state among the red lines. Little bit bigger disparity between how we did and the state, so we're pretty happy with that. However, we wanna continue to grow, and so, we wanna continue to analyze that data and see what areas we need to focus on. Here, we have the growth percentiles, again, showing our comparison with the state. Again, you see third, or fourth grade, we're not, we don't have third grade data up there, because you can't have growth in third grade, because that's the first year they're taking the test. So, the growth percentiles begin in fourth grade, and you'll see our fourth graders are a little bit, you know, as it relates to the growth, a little bit below the state. So, we wanna look at that and see where, you know, we can focus our attentions to improve in that area. However, we're still in that moderate range, that moderate range. So, as we get into subgroup data, which is, I wanna share the slide that I presented during our, when I presented the report on our cultural competency. Again, we're looking at here equality, equity, reality, and liberation. We wanna be at the liberation. So, as we look through the sub-grade group data, we wanna keep that in mind, and we wanna look at the barriers. As you see, the fence is removed, so all spectators can see the field, and they're all on equal footing. And that's, that's a representation of where we wanna be with our subgroup populations. So, as we look through the data and disaggregate the data, we wanna look for those achievement gaps and try to understand why those achievement gaps exist. So, going into the next slide, we see a comparison. As we look here, again, with the state, and we have back-to-back slides to compare the achievement levels in the first slide to the left and to the right. And this is for our subgroup of populations, again, in grades three through eight, just as the previous slides were grades three through eight. And as you see at the bottom, where you're listing the, the different subgroup of population of students are listed. And you see in that, there's a disparity between how all the students have done compared to the different subgroup of population of students, and that's where we wanna focus our attention. Why is that happening? What kind of barriers are there that are preventing those students from performing better? And so, we have some work to do in that area. Again, looking at the growth percentiles, however, if you look at the growth percentiles, or, you know, you see that they're in that moderate growth range, so they are learning. However, we wanna continue that and try to use that knowledge to raise their achievement levels. So, going to the next slide, that, those first two slides were ELA, and here, here we are in, I'm sorry. We have the district and state ELA results by subgroup, and then, we have the math. So, this is our math results by subgroup, by the, each subgroup. Again, grades three through eight. The first, the slide to the left, you're looking at achievement levels, and as you see the disparity between all, how all students are performing with those subgroup of population of students. And again, when we talk about the achievement gap, that's what we're talking about. Like, why are those students not achieving at the same level? So, again, looking at the goals, the learning objectives, the standards, what barriers are there, you know, looking at our instructional practices, we wanna focus on that to, to make sure that those students are achieving at, at a higher level. But then again, when you go over and look at the growth percentile, that shows us that our students are learning, because it's, again, it's moderate growth there. However, we wanna continue to work on that, so we're seeing that high growth. You know, our goal is to be in that high growth range. So, going to the next slide, this is where we get into looking at our race, ethnicity, and gender groups of students, again, grades three through eight. These are our ELA results, how they performed in the ELA section of the MCAS. You're looking at the, at the bottom, you'll see that the different race, racial, and ethnic groups are listed. You see the first, the first range, data range, is showing how all students are performing. Again, the red is the state, so we're continuing to compare ourselves against the state. You'll see there with our African-American population of students for ELA and achievement levels, in grades three through eight, we're below the state level. So, we wanna be able to look at that and figure out why. So, as we look at the African-American and Hispanic and Latino population of students, they're performing, there's a gap between how all the other groups are performing, between those two groups. So, we wanna look at what's going on there and how we can best support those, those, those groups of students. Then, we look over at the growth range. We still see that the African-American population of students is at the lower range, as well as the Hispanic and Latino students, which are actually below the growth percentile from the state. So, we have some work to do in that area as well. So, moving on, we go to our next slide. And we have the district and state math results by race, ethnicity, and gender. Again, we have the ELA in the previous slide, and now, we're looking at the math results. A little bit better, as we look at our, all of our students. However, our African-American population of students is just below the state average with the achievement level, and that's where we, again, we wanna focus our attention and figure out why that's happening. And also, looking at our Hispanic and Latina, which, you know, tends to be at the lower performing achievement levels, performing lower than the other groups of students. So, again, we wanna focus our attention and figure out why that's happening. When we move over to the right, we look at the growth percentiles. Again, we're performing our African-American students, as well as the other groups of students. Like, Asian students, and our Hispanic students are in the moderate range, so we're happy to see that they're learning. However, we wanna utilize that information to apply to the achievement levels, and we need to have them perform at a higher rate, rate at the achievement levels. So, moving on, we have our elementary results. We're looking at it by building. I don't have it broken down by subgroup populations with the, at the elementary level. We need a little bit more work to do around that, because it's not readily available through the Edwin Analytics, which, which is where I get a lot of the data from the state website. So, we have to, you know, kinda crunch the numbers and try to narrow it down to that three, three through five grade range, as we look at the subgroup populations and our race and ethnicity. But here, we're looking at all students. We see that across the board, you know, our students are doing fairly well. And, but we wanna continue to work to make sure that there's a consistent performance across each one of the schools. And you see, this is the achievement level report. So, this is the number of students, or the percentage of students that are scoring in the exceeding and meeting expectation range. And so, that's our ELA, and then, we go into math. Again, we wanna, you know, find out how we can be more consistent across each one of the grades. So, when we talk about disaggregating data, this is what we do, and we wanna drill even deeper into looking at the, how they performed on each of the standards. And then, we also wanna review the released test items, and then, look at the questions, the actual questions that they're, that the students are being asked, and figure out, you know, look at the vocabulary, look at the way that they're asking the questions, and be able to make sure that, you know, our students are able to respond to those questions appropriately. Going into our middle school report results, again, we have, you know, comparison to the state. And it's a little easier at, to compare to the state at the middle school range as well, because all the students are at the middle school. So, those reports are readily available, as I pull out Addison's reports. And so, you know, again, at the elementary level, we will be able to, you know, disaggregate that data and see how they performed against the state. It just takes a little bit longer to do so. But looking at the state, here, we're looking at the achievement levels compared to the state. And in this, this graph, whoops, I'm sorry. You'll see the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and how they, this is all students. So, you see our, our, we, there's a big disparity in how our students in those grade levels compared against the state, so we're pretty happy with that. Again, however, we still wanna still focus on how we can improve that and, and continue to get better and build up on what we already know about our students and their learning. And so, looking at the next, that's ELA, I'm sorry. Did I show math? That's ELA. And then, we're looking at the ELA growth percentile. So, I'm sorry, the next report is the growth percentile, and then, we'll get into math. But this is our, how our students in each one of the grade levels compared with the state, with their growth percentiles. And as you can see, sixth grade, we're right level with the state. Seventh grade is a little bit higher, and then, eighth grade is a little bit, is, is in double digits. However, we still want to improve upon that and build up on those scores. And this will happen as well, as we get more adept at, you know, looking at the standards and, and as the students get more adept at taking the test, the Next Generation test, I think that that will improve as well. So, going into our sixth, seventh, and eighth, right now, we're looking at the subgroup populations, just as we did district-wide. So, our subgroup populations, again, are, and, and just to define what those subgroups are for, you know, everyone listening and viewing this presentation. So, we have all students, non-economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, non-disabled, students with disabilities, our ELL students. And I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't have put in the, the non-economics. So, our subgroups are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, our ELL students, former ELL students, and then, they are, are, all the, those categories are also put into our high-needs population. So, those are the subgroups that we're looking at here. And what I did was, is I prepared the graph to show how those groups of students compared to, for instance, the economically disadvantaged students, how they compared to the non-economically disadvantaged, so you could see that comparison. Again, you'll see that there's a disparity in performance as it relates to the achievement levels. Again, that's our achievement gap. We want to be able to utilize this information, again, to drill down, disaggregate the data, look at the standards, figure out why this is happening. We want to definitely be more consistent in their performance and, and with those expectations that they're going to perform just as well as our, as the, as their counterparts. So, then, we go into the ELA growth percentiles. Okay, the previous slide was looking at the achievement levels. Now, we're looking at growth percentiles, and we see that, you know, all of our students are forty-seven percent in that moderate range of growth. And then, we look at the other subgroups of students and how they compare to their counterparts. And you see there's a gap there. And you see at the students with disabilities, they're at the lower range of, of their growth percentile. So, again, we wanna look at this, utilize this information, and figure out why this is happening. And so, that's, that's some areas that we wanna focus on. Going to and looking at, I'm sorry, there was the growth, I'm sorry. I, I didn't click and advance the slide. So, that's the growth percentiles with the subgroups, and they're compared to their counterparts. And you see there, the students with disabilities are at thirty-eight percent, which is in a lower range. So, moving to the next slide, we, yes?
What is the gap there, the ELL?
So, if you look at, okay, so if you see, I'm sorry, the ELL. So, there has to be a, in order to have these groups, to have data reported by the state on these groups, you need to have these subgroups, you have to have a certain amount of students in that subgroup. So, in the ELL population, population of students from sixth to eighth grade, you did not have twenty students take the MCAS.
Got it.
So, therefore, they're, that's why there's no, there's not a range there in the ELL, but, you know, where the ELL title is or the category. Because we only had twelve students who are considered ELL, receiving ELL support, take the MCAS. So, in those different areas where we don't have enough to count as a subgroup in the eyes of the state, you know, what we can do is we can identify who those students are and then compare their, compare their scores to their counterparts. So, we can still get the data, it just, it's not gonna be reported as all the other subgroup populations are reported.
Yeah.
Okay? That, that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, going on, these are the growth percentiles. Now, we're looking at the sixth through eighth grade, the ELL results, the achievement levels, and we're looking at race, ethnicity, and gender. And we see that our African-American population of students is at the thirty-two percentile of exceeding or meeting expectations on the MCAS. And you see that there's, there's, you know, that's where the achievement gap is happening. Again, with our Hispanic and Latina students, there's another, you know, achievement gap. So, again, we want our students to be performing consistently across all racial and ethnic groups. So, again, we have some work to do in that area and figure out why that's happening. Going on and looking at their growth percentiles, race, ethnicity, and gender, you'll see that, you know, all, all the groups are in the moderate range. However, we wanna continue to improve, because there's still a, a gap there. And we wanna make sure that that's consistent across all the groups. And I do wanna go back here and look, also, area of interest was looking at how our male students did on the ELA test compared to the female students, and you'll see there's an achievement gap there as well, fifteen percentage points. So, we wanna look at that. And then, we wanna look at how many of those male students are falling into the other race, ethnic, ethnic groups, and try to, you know, disaggregate that data and drill that down. So, we looked at the growth percentiles of race, ethnicity, and gender. Again, we're looking for that consistent performance. Now, we're gonna move into looking at the overall student population compared to the state with math. So, we've looked at the ELA data at the middle school level, now, we're moving to math. You'll see that the sixth grade, seventh, and eighth grade, you know, outperformed the state. Now, we're pretty happy about that. However, we wanna still concentrate and try to improve upon that. And now, we're looking at the growth data from sixth through eighth grade, all students compared to the state. And you'll see that there's just a little bit disparity there between sixth, seventh, sixth and seventh grade. Eighth grade is a little bit wider disparity, but however, we wanna continue to improve upon it. Even though we're in the moderate range, we wanna raise those growth percentiles to the high range. So, looking at the math results by subgroups, sixth through eighth grade, you'll see, again, that there's an achievement gap between the economically disadvantaged students and their counterparts, and then, with the students with disabilities. In all of the subgroup categories, you see that there's an achievement gap. So, we need to make sure that we're focusing on that. And it, and this is, will fall in line with our cultural competency goal and looking at instruction and how we're reaching and being able to reach all students, notwithstanding their cultural, their, their subgroup, what subgroup they fall in. So, here, we're looking at the growth percentile subgroups. You see, it's a, it's pretty consistent as you look across the board. Our former ELL students, however, are far exceeds, is, is into the high range. And then, looking at the high-needs population of student, this is where they actually outperformed the other, their counterparts. So, they are in the fifty-eighth percentile, which is great. Again, we wanna push that into the high range, so we wanna continue to, we wanna build off of that. So, that's kudos to all the teachers. And so, we're looking next, the next slide is our math results, and we're looking at it broken down by race and ethnicity and gender. Now, most people, when they talk about math, they figure that the male population is outperforming the female population, but as you can see at this chart, on this past MCAS, our female population outperformed our males. And so, that's something to look at. But again, as you look at the African-American students and the Hispanic and Latina students, you know, that, there again, there, there lies that achievement gap. So, we see that, we're seeing that across the subject areas, that there's, is, there's a need for us to concentrate on how we're instructing those populations of students. Now, looking at the growth percentiles, you see all the race and ethnic groups and gender groups are in the moderate range, which is great. The Asian population of students is in the high range of their growth. So, we wanna continue to focus on how to make that more consistent. So, now, we're gonna move into the high school results. High school, as you know, they take the tenth grade MCAS, and they have to pass it in order to have a state-endorsed diploma. And so, we're looking at this, and I, and I apologize for the graph here. It's, it's pretty hard to read, so I am going to replace those graphs, and so, I can send it to you again with the, with the more legible graph. But I can just read it out to you, like, for advanced and proficient. And, and I wanna remind you that the high school took the legacy MCAS. So, they didn't take the Next Generation version of the MCAS. So, they took the legacy. So, they did get an accountability rating, which was a level one, and that is consistent with how the high school has performed over the years. So, they are still performing at a level one. If you look here, the, and this is compared historical data, so this is why I included this graph, 'cause I, I think it was, it's very nice to see that the high school is performing at a consistent rate over the years, since two thousand and fourteen. But ninety-eight percent of the students in ELA, this is all students, performed in an advanced and proficient range. And so, because they took the legacy test, they're utilizing the traditional achievement level. So, that was the advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning, and failing. And our next, this is even broken down by subgroup populations of students for advanced and proficient. We had ninety-one percent of our students perform on the advanced and proficient range. This is the high-needs subgroup of students. For our economically disadvantaged, eighty-nine percent of the population of students performed in the advanced and proficient range levels. Students with disabilities scored, eighty-eight percent of the students with disabilities scored in an advanced and proficient level. And then, looking at the math, so that was our ELA results, our math. We have ninety-five percent of all students perform in the advanced and proficient level. The high-needs population scored, a subgroup of students scored in, eighty-three percent of the students scored in an advanced and proficient range. Our economically disadvantaged subgroup of populations of students scored in an advanced and proficient range. And then, students with disabilities, we had, oh, I thought I wrote that down. Seventy-nine percent of the students score in the advanced and proficient range. Now, I did not include the, the slides for the ethnic groups, but I can report out that seventy-seven percent of the tenth graders in math scored in the seventy-seven of African-American students. Seventy-seven percent scored in advanced and proficient range. Our Asian population of students, ninety-five percent scored in advanced proficient range. Hispanic, Latina, ninety-one percent of the students scored in advanced and proficient range. And our multi-race, non-Hispanic, Latina student population scored in a ninety-five percent advanced or proficient range, and the white population of students scored in the advanced and proficient range. And I'll read them for the ELA results as well. So, for our African-American students, ninety-three percent of them scored in advanced and proficient range. One hundred percent of our Asian students at the tenth grade level in ELA scored in advanced and proficient range or levels. The Hispanic and Latina, one hundred percent scored in advanced and proficient levels. Our multi-race, non-Hispanic, Latina students, one hundred percent scored in the advanced and proficient level, and ninety-eight percent of the white students scored in the advanced and proficient levels. So, going on to our science and technology, looking at the scores. At the fifth grade, we had sixty, I'm gonna have to look at this, 'cause, again, Again, and the reason why the, the science and technology is reported this way is because they, um, took the legacy test. So science and technology was not part of the next generation, uh, uh, so there were, uh, sixty-seven percent of our fifth grader scored in advanced and proficient range at the fifth grade level, at the eighth grade level. And these are the grades that take the science and technology, so it's eighth grade, oops, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for that. In the eighth grade, I have to advance the slides. So you see, it's a little bit easier to read up there. Uh, so it's sixty-eight, uh, percent, as I said, at fifth grade, of our fifth graders who took the science, technology, and engineering test scored in the advanced and proficient range. And then you'll see here in our, uh, eighth grade, uh, they take the science and technology engineering test again. Um, we had, uh, seventy-three? Sixty-three, I'm sorry. Sixty-three percent of the students scored in advanced proficient range. And then looking at tenth grade, you'll see there we had, uh, eighty-five percent of our students scored in the advanced proficient range. So as you can see, um, our students generally did very well at the high school level. Um, and that's including in the subgroups and in the race and ethnicity. So what are our next steps? How do we take this data? How do we utilize it in order to inform our instruction? So our, our, a data specialist has created digital folders, uh, that we're going to give access to different, our coaches, principals, curriculum leaders, and teachers, so they can utilize that to have discussions around the data. Again, I want to stress that the MCAS is one piece of data. We also have common assessments, uh, that we have utilized in the district as well as, you know, teacher observations and unit tests. So there's, uh, this is just one piece of data, and it's really summative. Cause we cannot utilize the MCAS and, and what we learn from the MCAS can't be applied to that group of students that you have in front of you. Primarily, when you get the MCAS results back in the fall, you don't have that group of students, that cohort of students anymore. They've moved on. However, we can utilize the MCAS to look at instructional trends, look at how we did on various standards, look at the item analysis, we can look at the type of questions that are being asked. And we can integrate those type of questions into teacher-made tests and review those with, with students. Uh, but again, I, I, I want to emphasize that we don't teach to the tests. So we want to look at how we're gearing our instruction and how that's, how our instruction is meeting the standards. So, um, when we, whenever we do go into bullet number two, whenever we do look at, at, at the data, we want to make sure that we're using a re, a research-based, um, data protocol for looking at the data and making sure that's consistent. And, and it's usually done in a non-judgmental way, so we're just utilizing this as information. So we can integrate it and we can use it to inform our instruction. So as we look at those teaching trends, we can set goals for the previous year, from the previous year to, to the next year. So we can say, this is where we need to focus our litters in our reading instruction. This is where we need to focus our math instruction based upon, you know, how our students did across the district on this particular standard. And that's going to also vary between, um, schools. So schools have to also look at this data and see where their population of students in each one of the grade levels. And, um, I recommend that we set grade level goals and, and see how we can utilize that to, um, be consistent in, across the district. And so, uh, as I, you know, alluded to in bullet number three, looking at instructional practice, that can be shared district-wide. And then also, you know, I, I alluded to the fact that we need to set goals, learning goals across the district and among schools, uh, by grade level. So I think that, uh, we, the data is definitely helpful, especially at looking at how our subgroups of populations of students are performing and looking at it as, as, as rates, our students in the various, um, groups, our ethnic, um, our students in various ethnic and racial, um, groups are also performing. So we can utilize that to inform our instruction and to look at how, uh, we can level our, differentiate our instructions so we're meeting the needs of all students.
Very good. Questions?
Yep.
The data that you, uh, shared with us from the high school on the, uh, the breakdown with the ethnic groups and stuff was dramatically different from, uh, the lower grades. The legacy test versus the, the new one. Uh, and I, the last item that you put up there is setting, uh, the, the, the goals. And I assume that's part of what's driving that particular thing. The high school, the system itself has done a good job in meeting the needs that were demonstrated at the lower grade levels coming up as the test scores show. I guess I'd ask you to take a look at the, the former scores at the lower grades on the legacy to see if there was that difference as well in the subgroups that you showed us tonight. Or was, could that be just a factor of the new test, uh, in your analysis and stuff? I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing this, we shouldn't be looking at it. But I have a concern with the state sometimes and, and their motivation with new tests every now and then to... We do well, we do extremely well with our groups and stuff. And then as soon as we start achieving well, they seem to change the, the, the rules and stuff for us. So, uh, I just wanted to share that observation with you.
Absolutely. Yep.
Oh, um, yeah, so I, I have a couple of observations. Um, one is that it seems like we're doing some great things in math, especially in, um, the lower up to grade eight. Um, although, interestingly, the high school was much better in ELA, um, in terms of, um, subgroups. I appreciate the breakdown. The other thing I noticed, um, and I'm wondering if you could talk to this, is that, um, in the breakdowns of ethnic groups, we were doing significantly much better in the middle school than we are in, if you look at the whole. And I'm wondering if you have a sense now of where the, if, where the weakness is? I mean, do we have particular grade levels that we think are weaker than others? Is it a, a function of students who are new to our district, who we haven't had enough time with yet? And by the time we get them in middle school, you know, we, we've instructed them enough? Um, you know, if you have a sense of, of that?
Well, not, not just yet. Uh, we still have a lot more work to do, uh, to disaggregate the data and, but those are all very good questions that we have. And that, that, that have been posed. So we haven't, I have not really gotten into and, and figured out the reasons why. Really, we're just, at this particular point, we're just making observations, looking at the data and making observations. So the next step will be to make inferences as to why this is happening. And, and so those are all very good questions. And I think over, as this, as we begin to start taking the next generation or through future years, going back to your questions, the, the interesting part is like looking at cohorts of students. And as they move up the grades and seeing how, you know, you know, where they're doing very well and where they have certain areas of need, cause every cohort is gonna, is gonna look a little different. Um, so I'm, I'm interested in seeing how, over time, our performance changes.
Right.
And, and that's using, utilizing the information, asking those hard questions, looking at how the grades or particular grade is doing compared to other grades. But I think, uh, taking that lens and looking at how those cohorts of students are performing as they go from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade. And that, to me, is a better comparative.
Right.
Because you're looking at the same cohort of students and how they're moving through the grades as opposed to looking at how sixth grade is doing compared to seventh grade.
Right, because if we're doing better with those students year on, year, that's great. That's good news to hear, right? And if we're not, then, then we, we need to know that as well.
Right, and my, mind you, you have to keep in mind too, that the state is claiming, or not claiming, but they're, they're reporting that they're going to also by two thousand nineteen, they will have a next generation test in place at the high school level.
Right.
So all students will be taking the next generation test. So right now, it's pretty difficult as you have students taking the next generation test, three through eight. And now you have students taking the legacy test at the, you know, at the high school level. Well, you know, is, is that test really the same? So going back to your question, how do we track the, the progress of students? If the test is not, if, if the, at the basic, you know, what they're claiming, what they're saying is that they're, they're aligning the standards, but they haven't changed the high school test yet.
Well, it, it, though, it did seem that we were better with middle school students than we were, if you looked at the, um, your, your overall students. So that, I thought that was heartening, especially since I think in this district, middle school had previously been a soft spot. And it's really heartening to see that we've made such huge improvement at the middle school level. Thanks.
And I, and I just want to state, like, the teachers are working, I've been in classrooms, you know, teachers are working very hard. This is not, I just, I just want to say that, you know, looking at, uh, the data will help us inform our practice and build off of, off of what we're already doing very well. So teachers are working hard, they're looking at the data, we've done a lot of work around curriculum. Um, and so looking at, just being able to utilize this data to look at we're doing well and build off of that. So I just want to emphasize that point.
Thank you very much for this. Uh, I can see that looking at a comparison with the state is helpful and I imagine is easy to get a hold of. But I wonder if it's not appropriate to have some other academic comparison. Um, for financial things, we use a town manager twelve. I don't know if that's the right set of towns. But to look at something that's, you know, disaggregates out some of the...
Similar districts.
Yeah, similar districts, um, especially as we go into a new test. I worry that the state is kind, I mean, they're kind of defining the state at fifty percent or whatever, to a good extent. And so I'm just thinking to be helpful, they know, you know, is everyone, are we doing kind of where our peers are? Are we doing better, are we doing worse? And, and just get a sense of that. So that's one question. And then the other was specifically about the science and technology things. I'm wondering, looking at the differences between the eighth grade and the tenth grade results, did they change the passing bar? I mean, the, the level that, um...
They should not have at...
It, it just...
You mean from like how kids are doing at the tenth grade level?
Yeah, where, where the cutoffs are, it, it just seems...
Yeah, uh, three to eight, yes. Very, three to eight, very much, tenth is the same.
They changed the cutoffs from three to eight.
They changed the whole test.
Yeah.
But not in, not in science, not in science.
Oh, no, not in the science.
They did not change the cut scores, they did not change anything on the science.
But I mean, but I mean, do they, I don't mean did they change it this year. I mean, do they have a different spot for a cuts, for a passing, for the advanced or the passing? I'm, I'm just thinking, we did, it, the results between the eighth grade and the tenth grade are very different in terms of how many kids are scoring advanced, how many are proficient, and then how many are needs improvement. And it just seems odd. And I wonder if it's the test versus our students.
Historically, the tenth grade test has been easier.
That's, that's when I'm, that's kind of what I'm asking.
If I may, that's one of the things I asked, uh, Rod to look at, to go back and look at the old eighth grade and see if there's that disparity as well.
Yeah, yeah.
But see, this, this is a test that we can actually compare. I can take the eighth graders and compare over the years.
Yeah.
Because they didn't change it. And that's why you see those graphs are through the year. So it's right up there. So the, to answer your question, you'll see the historical data right there. So you'll see how the tenth grade, the eighth graders did in two thousand seventeen, you'll see how they did in two thousand sixteen, all the way back to two thousand fourteen.
But, but you need to now go back and, though prior years, compare them with the tenth grades to see if they're, the, right now, there's a disparity between the eighth grade and the tenth grade. And that could be, the question could be...
So if you look at these two graphs, if you look at these graphs, you'll see the fifth grade is all the way back to two thousand fourteen.
Right.
You'll look at eighth grade. So here, you can look at all the, how the kids did in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. So you have the scores there, and then you can compare right there, tenth grade.
Yeah, so if we look at our...
You can do that, you can do that historical analysis because they have not changed the science and technology in, in the test. So to answer your question, it's right there, you can do that right there.
Yeah, so, so I think Paul answered. If, if it's that the tenth grade test is easier, that, that's what it, that's what the results look like. And, and that's what I'm trying to get at, that it's not that our science instruction suddenly improved so much in eighth and, and ninth grade.
You also have to look at the, the kids are developmentally, you know, maturing. You know, so you have to not only look at the, the content, but you have to also look at the, the students. They're getting older, they're getting, you know, as, as students, you know, get older, they're able to perform a little better. They're, they're maturing. So, I mean, we, we always look at the academic portion, but we also have to look at the development of students and the kids that are taking the test. And so they're getting older.
I, I'd like to just be very careful when we use the word easier because the tenth grade test is the standard the state has set to achieve the diploma in all, in those three areas.
Sure.
So I...
I mean, I hope, I hope I didn't imply that...
No.
Other questions? Paul?
Statistical was, uh, easier was a statistical term, not, not a different relative difficulty of the test. And the tenth grade test is different in that it's content area related. So that if you're doing biology, you take the biology test at the end of your biology course and you have, you know, pass that, the, the test relative to one content area.
So my, my questions are, um, you said that, you know, we're gonna look at the, the, um, the scores for African-American students, we're gonna look at the scores. The we is, is you and some of the principal, who's the we in the group doing the...
Very good question. So, uh, and I, I just want to also, before I go further, credit Paula O'Sullivan, who helped me to create this PowerPoint, and I utilized her, um, quite a bit in order to get her input. And she is the, um, data specialist for the district. Uh, so she was very instrumental in creating this, uh, report. But to get back to your question, so the we would be myself as assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, um, Allison, who's director of, uh, special education, uh, all the department heads, curriculum leaders, uh, you know, in each one of the content areas, uh, as well as Dr. Bodie as being the superintendent of the, of the school district, principals, um, looking at that. And, and, and we also have during our early release schedule, built-in data meetings. Uh, so there's, there's plenty of time, uh, that, that these groups can get together as, as department heads have their meetings, they can meet with the teachers, they can look at the data, uh, use a data protocol that I've introduced to them. Uh, we've actually have started looking at this data using that protocol in our curriculum leaders', uh, meeting. And so that, that's the we. And, uh, and also I asked Paula, or I, you know, we worked to make these digital data folders, so the data is very accessible. And so we're gonna roll that out, um, next week and, uh, to the teachers. Uh, so, and I also created data binders for the elementary prin, all principals, so they can have it readily, uh, there, so that they don't have to go into Edwin Analytics in order to access it, because sometimes you can get lost in Edwin Analytics. And that's, you know, that, you spend, you can spend a lot of time generating reports. So what I wanted to do is facilitate that process and provide the reports for the district leaders, so they don't, they don't have to go rummaging around. And so that's right there for them for access, and then they can utilize that during their, their data meeting. So that's, that's the cool, and, and that's, you know, things that we've already taken steps to do to make that, to facilitate that process.
Got it. And do you, um, after the group, you know, starts this process, do you anticipate, um, guiding faculty in any specific, you know, uh, grade level about instruction that might be modified to respond to the needs of some of the, some of the groups that we, some of the subgroups we've talked about?
Absolutely. So we, we will, you know, drill down the data and look at, uh, particular, uh, grade levels. It will vary from school to school as well. So, um, because each school has a different population of students. And, uh, so the data that I showed you, uh, with the middle school, that was, you know, like I said, readily accessible because all our population of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students go to the middle school. So there's gonna have to be some more work done around the elementary level to look down, I mean, to drill down the data into the subgroup population of students. Because you might have one elementary school not have the same subgroups that another elementary school will have, um, based upon just the numbers, sheer numbers. So what we want to do is like, we want to actually identify those students who fall into those subgroups. And then we'll have to calculate how they did percentage-wise achievement level and try to figure out their growth percentiles as well on our own, because that's not going to be generated by the state.
Are you gonna have specific remediation for these kids, or what's, how would it...
So we look at it as intervention. Um, and so how we're focusing tho, that intervention and who's included in that. So looking at the structure of intervention.
Yeah.
Are we, like, so a good question would say, would, would ask is, does our, the, the way that our intervention system is set up, are we supplanting direct instruction? So are we pulling kids during direct instruction, like in ELA and math, to provide them with, uh, intervention? Or are they, are we pulling them and they have access to that direct instruction? And so is our intervention process supplementing that direct instruction, instructional process? Which I'm sure it is, but just being able to refine that. Um, and so those are some of the questions that, you know, have come out of looking at this data.
And do you anticipate modifying common assessments or other assessments with some of these? And do you anticipate modifying common assessments or other assessments with some of these, some of the questions from the MCAS? Is that sort of practice or?
Well, we, we've adopted iReady this year for, for our fourth and fifth graders, which is an online assessment. It is an adaptive test. So, that is one way we can look to see how well we're able to utilize iReady to kind of predict how students are going to perform on the MCAS. So, that's a question I have right now as we look at it. And we've given one round of it. So, we are going to give another round of iReady in ELA in math and fourth and fifth and at the middle school in math. So, we're going to give another round of that, administer that assessment in January. So, being able to look at those results and see whether or not by utilizing that, those iReady results as well as those earlier assessments, we're also going to do an audit of our assessments that we give to our first through, our kindergarten through third grade students. So, being able to look at an audit, I mean, auditing those assessments and figuring out whether or not we're, we're getting the information that we're looking for that can help inform our intervention. And so, yeah, we're going to look at the common assessments and try to look at whether or not we're getting the correct information to, to inform intervention and inform teachers.
Got it. All right. I appreciate your presentation.
No worries.
I think we all do. Okay, the next presentation, the next topic on the agenda is the homeschooling report. Same presenter.
So, just, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory. If you look at the report, I tried to break it down by grade, the number of students in each one of those grades. And this is throughout the district that are being homeschooled. So, we have 32 total homeschool, I mean, students who are being homeschooled. And 21 of those 32 homeschooled, if you look at the bottom of the report, were homeschooled for the 2016, 2017 school year. So, I wanted, so I was curious to know how many of those students who went to Arlington Public Schools last year are now being homeschooled. And seven of the new, out of the 21 students who went to Arlington Homeschool, Arlington Public School students last year are now being homeschooled. So, what I would also like to do is to send out a survey to those families who are homeschooling their students in order to understand why they're homeschooling their students. And, and I talked to one family. And from what I can ascertain, they're very religious. And so, they wanted to make sure that they were integrating the religious curriculum along with the content areas in their academics. So, that is one reason. And this is not the family reporting that to me just based upon my conversations with that family. It seemed that that's the reason why they're homeschooling their students. Because they have a large amount of their curriculum that they presented to me is based upon their religion. So, that's just, you know, a snapshot of our homeschooling population of students.
Do you know how many students there were last year who were homeschooled?
Well, I do not. I, I, I do, but I don't have it prepared for this report.
It would just be interesting to see. I get the sense that it's kind of becoming more of a trend. I don't know. I just, I talk, you know, I, I run the, I help run the Girls Who Code for middle school girls here in Arlington. And I'm, I was surprised to see how many were homeschooled. And I just, it just seems like, wow. And the more people I talk to, the more I feel like people are saying, oh, yeah, and I homeschool this kid and, you know, or I, you know, oh, my neighbor homeschools their kids. And I don't know, I just feel like it's growing. And I don't, I don't really have any proof, but it seems like that there's more than there have been. I just wondered. So, I would love to see what the trend is.
Yeah. So, I don't have a clear idea what the trend is, but I know that we used to report this data. And I was looking back at old enrollment numbers. And it's all over the place. It's like, you know, some years it was 80, you know, other, so it's, it's-
Wow. So, it's kind of gone up and down?
I think it's gone up and down, but it would be interesting to plot it, to see.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Just to see if there is-
You know, is it going up and down, but the general trend is up, you know, or something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
It would be really, it would be interesting to plot it.
Well, I started organizing the information. So, we do have spreadsheets. And so, we, we've cleaned up some of that data. Some of the students that were on there have now gone out and graduated. So, this is based upon, you know, going through and doing an audit. And this is what we came up on for this year.
The, do we, can, and some of this may be private, but how many, how many of these avail themselves of testing under special education stuff? Do we? And how many of these students participate in athletics and after-school activities and things of this nature? I assume we, we're not eligible for any chapter 70 money based on these. Yet, I do know that they have the, the right to, to all the services that we, we provide as, as even the private schools in town.
And, and they are also, if you recall, we mentioned the proportionate share obligation we have. They now fall under that proportionate share obligation as well.
With the town? With the town?
Special ed.
Yeah. If they are a homeschool student who is eligible for special ed services, they need to be calculated in our proportionate share funding.
Okay. So, that's the state money coming back.
That's that portion of the IDEA grant that we are required to spend on private school students.
But, I mean, my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, Rod, the, if a homeschooled student wanted to participate in an after-school club or an athletic thing, where they would be expected to be allowed to do that. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Actually, I had two things. But just to clarify, so if a student is homeschooled and special education and deserving services, we give money to the private school that they're not going to.
No. So, under that proportionate share, that, those are all calculated in that amount in that, that's the group that's eligible. However, in Massachusetts, so this proportionate share comes under the federal regulations for the IDEA grant. But in Massachusetts, you have a local entitlement. So, if you're also a resident of Arlington, as Mr. Haney was pointing out, you also have an entitlement to an individual education claim.
Right, of course. Yeah, yeah, okay. I have actually-
Yep.
One point. So, I've been going through the policies just for fun because I hadn't ever done it before. And so, I stumbled upon LBC dash R, which says, honor before November 30th of each year, the superintendent will prepare for the committee a summary of the children included in home instruction, which this is, which is great. But then, it says, this report will also summarize in general the appropriateness or possible deficiencies of home education situations. And so, I'm not asking for this right now, but it'd be interesting to know, is, is there a way that we can get that information?
Is there a date on that?
Yeah.
The date on that?
Yeah. So, I know we're going through the policies, 2008.
So, can you restate the question?
So, the question is, well, according to our current policies, which we're revising, so maybe it doesn't survive, we're supposed to see sort of a, a summary of the appropriateness or possible deficiencies in these home education systems. And not by student, you know, but just sort of a general idea.
Paul, did you want to?
Yeah. I mean, the law has changed since that policy was written.
Okay, right.
Basically, we, we don't, we don't have the right to say no. And we don't have a right to evaluate a homeschool situation.
We don't, we don't have, well, so we don't have a right to, to say whether it's appropriate or not?
No. Well, I can-
I was just going to say-
Let Rod.
All right.
So, when, there is a process for when, for a parent to submit a homeschooling application.
Right.
So, part of that process is that they, they have to submit the plan. It has to meet the required school days, which is 180 days.
Right.
And they have to show that. And they also have to make sure in that plan that they let us know who's providing the education. What is the background for those, for that person who's providing the education? And what are the goals and objectives in each one of the content areas? And what are the resources that they're using in order to implement the educational plan? And then, at the end of the year, they give a, an assessment report on how that particular student performed under that educational plan. So, but there-
It seems like we should be able to, to say generally whether we think that these are right or not, you know?
Well, what you can, what I've done, been doing since I've arrived, and I'm sure my predecessor did the same as well, is that if there's something that's deficient in the plan, for instance, if they don't include an educational goal for social studies or provide the resource or provide the necessary information that's outlined in our policy, then I send it back and I say, can you please provide that in order for me to approve the plan? Because there is an application that has been approved by a school committee that they have to fill out. And they have to attach the homeschooling plan to that application. So, that's part of the process. As it relates to accountability, there's not really a way that we can make sure that the plan is being implemented, you know, because it's not, it's not feasible for someone to do that, you know? So, what they have to do is they have to at least present a plan with those criterion so that we can make sure that, you know, at least they have a, a well-structured plan as we move into the school year.
Chris, you then, Paul.
Okay. I looked up the MASC policies because that's basically our reference for doing the policy. The one that you're talking about doesn't exist in the form that you're talking. It doesn't address that information at all. It talks about relationships with non-public schools. So, I think that policy, no matter what it's read now, is going away completely.
Okay.
So-
Yep.
Initially, when I started teaching, the school department had complete say. They could reject the thing. And they had, the accountability and assessment was approved. And it was very rigid. Since then, there have been several challenges through the SJC. And basically, you have to accept, if they say their child has passed, we have to accept it. The point comes, if they want a high school diploma, they have to take the MCAS. And if they fail the MCAS, and they've given us, we have documentation and of all the plans that they have sent us, we have accepted those. If they had followed them, they should be, the child should be able to pass it. If the child doesn't pass it, we don't own it. But we have far less control as a public entity as we did 15, 20 years ago. We have to accept whatever they, they give them within parameters. You can offer suggestions as, as Rod just said a minute ago. But at the end of the year, when they give their assessment, we cannot question the validity of that assessment.
All right. Thank you very much. You're right on time. John, Denizio, your turn.
So, you have in your packet a copy of the four monthly reports again for a period ending October 31st. Just something brief about each of the reports. In the general fund, you'll see that the projected unencumbered balance at the bottom is about just under $470,000. That, it's about $200,000 less than last month. But again, this is different from the reporting you're used to seeing. That's not a, it's not like we spent $200,000 more than we thought last month. This is just sort of where we stand at this, this point in time and all known stuff. That, that, that $200,000 made up about, almost all of non-personnel, which is what we would expect because we weren't having projecting encumbrances in those lines. So, that was just $200,000 of, of stuff that we bought last month that we hadn't already encumbered. And the salary lines, not much has changed. The watch list still includes the same two. There's still, still a projection of a $100,000 deficit in the extended substitute lines. Again, I think that will continue to be massaged as we go along. And we'll have a, we'll fine-tune that number as we go. We'll always keep audit district special, audit district tuition as a, as a watch list for us. Currently, we're, we're still in pretty good shape. In the grant accounts, there's, nothing's changed as far as the projected budget in total. There has been one change, which I just added to the, to the memo, was that we did find out that the special ed program improvement grant, which we had, our budget plan called for using $42,000 of that, will not be offered this year. Allison got the great news last week. So, we, we, we'll meet to try to quantify what that means to us and put a plan together of, it's mostly used for professional development. So, the group will get together and try to figure out what we're going to do. And is that really a $40,000 hit? Or is there something we can do? And we'll have a plan at some point. On the revolving accounts, there's a, not much, nothing has changed in the total. There's just one thing to point out. The revolving accounts that we report on are only the ones that we call in our budget plan to use, that the money, that there's revenue and expense in our budget plan. One of them is the music lessons, which we collect money for at both the elementary level and at the secondary level. Traditionally, in the budget plan, only calls for the elementary level to be reported. However, they're both in the same account. So, if you looked at the music one, you would have seen that, wow, it's projecting a, a large deficit in there. That's because it's pulling the expenses now that we've put in the POs for all the people that are coming to the high school to, to teach the, the after-school music classes. All those expenses are in there with no revenues because we, and no budget because we, our budget plan doesn't call for that. So, I think what the best idea to do is to, is to talk to the budget subcommittee to see, do we want it on this report? Because we do have other things that are like that, daycare, after-school, community head, that we don't, we don't, we don't, our budget doesn't call for using any revenue from there. So, we don't report on them. So, maybe at the budget subcommittee, we can find out which are appropriate to report on and which aren't. And we'll square that away. But in case it caught anybody's eye, I didn't, I just wanted to briefly talk about it. And that was, you know, $170,000 problems, $170,000 difference. The rest were relatively no difference. So, the total, the cumulative report looked like, went down by, you know, $400,000. $200 is from the operating, the general fund. And the other is, is whether or not we're going to include that, that high school after-school music piece. And if we do, we, we would put a budget in too. So, that would take care of that. So, overall, nothing, nothing stands out yet for us to, to, you know, be worried about. So, we made it another month.
Great job, John. Questions? Yep.
Could, John, could you, or Rod, could you explain what an extended-term substitute teacher is versus a day-to-day sub? Is that a long-term sub?
Yes.
So, if somebody goes on maternity leave or somebody gets ill or something?
Yeah, it can be. And it can also be the building subs. So, the day-to-day subs to us are on-call subs.
Okay. My, my concern, looking at this, and I historically don't read it correctly. The regular day-to-day sub, we budgeted $21,000 and we've transferred $240,000 into that.
Yeah.
Historically, and I guess I'm more making a statement, historically, we've always underfunded that one. And I think going forward, we need to fund it properly for that. $360,000 for extended-term sub-teachers, that's roughly six teachers full-time. And I'm not, I mean, that's 180 days times six for the teachers on salary thing. We don't have teachers going out for a full year and paying them their full salary.
No, but we put building subs in.
So-
I understand, I understand. But, but what I'm saying is, if a person leaves, they have X amount of sick days to take. And we don't, I, I can't imagine six people being out for, and having that 180 days accumulated sick leave to cover. That's an awful lot of money, is what I'm saying, in an extended leave. Maybe it's appropriate. Again, it's up there, we have a concern that we, we're projecting a need for another $100,000 in that. So-
They also use it for PD. They use it for a lot of things, right?
Not extended.
Yes, yes. The building level subs now are doing more of that kind of stuff.
Okay. Is that where the building sub is?
Yes.
So, the, two questions.
Go ahead.
The first one about the transfer, that was because, we talked about it last time. It was just in the wrong line. So, it was budgeted, but it was just in the wrong line.
I wasn't paying attention.
Putting it in the right line.
Thank you.
And then, the extended is exactly that. The building subs at all the schools are in that line. So, that's both, that includes both building subs that are here all year. And it also includes anybody that's going to cover a long-term absence from the same core.
The building subs are paid at bachelor's step one?
No, they're BSP. So, they're $25,000-ish.
Twenty-five, they're less than step one? Thank you.
Yep.
It sounds like, just to let us know sort of what percentage, you know, are building subs? And then, what percentage are, that would be helpful.
The breakdown of-
The breakdown, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It just sounds like useful information to have.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. Superintendent's report, there's not going to be anything, Rob. Do you have anything to add?
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, actually, I have a big announcement. I am pleased to announce that the Arlington Education Foundation has committed to awarding $200,000 to the district over the next three years. This award is, is to support the district's Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative, which plans to build a comprehensive system of support for Arlington students. For this year, the grant award is just over $100,000. This grant will bring youth mental health first-day training to over 300 Arlington faculty and staff. This first-day training provides an understanding of normal adolescent development and mental health. It teaches brief interventional, interventional steps to help keep students well and when to hand off- to hand off to another level of, and, and let us know when another level of intervention is needed. It will also teach faculty and staff a shared language and understanding about youth mental and behavioral health. This year's grant also supports individual schools' work, individual schools' work implementing their Safe and Supportive School, Schools' action plans. These plans were created with support from prior grants from both AEF and the State of Massachusetts. So, I wanna thank AEF for committing to this very important initiative. It goes along and falls up under our social and emotional learning, and hopefully that will, we will learn a lot from this process.
Mr. McNeil, may I just add that we also are just, we started our Course Three in Helping Traumatized Children Learn, and we have a cohort of 26 educators who have been through Course One, Two, and Three. These are graduate-level courses. There's a four-course series. Upon completion of the four courses, those individuals be eligible for a trauma-sensitive endorsement. And we also started a Course One, which we have 24 staff, we'll be, we'll be starting that at the end of the month, 24 staff enrolled in that. So, at this point, once that's completed, we'll have 75 staff who have completed at least one graduate-level course in helping traumatized children learn, and that's also through Leslie University, and largely grant-funded through Leslie. The participants do pay $500, but it's a three-graduate credit course, so we're happy to be doing that again. And Sarah Byrd is the instructor for that class.
And I believe we will be one of only two districts to have the, all four stages of teachers going through all four stages?
It's been ongoing for a couple of years. Some of the larger districts like Bratton and that have been running it for several years, but we're at a point where, by the end of this year, ideally, we'll have, you know, that first cohort of 27 teachers who've completed all four courses.
So, I also have a report from our athletic director.
Did you want to ask a question about the first thing?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just wondering if I can get a sense of what the training looks like that the AEF grants is funding?
So, the Youth Mental Health First Aid Training is an international model. It's, you know, based on the idea of CPR, or, you know, first aid responder, so that it's designed for individuals in schools working with adolescents to recognize what, as Mr. McNeil said, is typical development and what is atypical. So, learning around, you know, when student, what, what are the signs of a student who may be experiencing, you know, trauma, maybe experiencing issues with mental health, maybe experiencing suicidal ideation, and how to respond in the moment, and as he said, how to recognize when you need to take it to the next level of care. So, it's built on that first aid responder model.
So, is it, is it like a summer thing?
No, it's a day-long, it's an eight-hour course. So, when you complete it, you're considered a, a mental health first-ader.
Okay.
You get your card. But the plan is to train trainers, so that we will have 30 people in district trained as trainers, so that we can then go through the cohort of teachers with our own resources.
Fabulous news. Great. Thanks.
So, we have a report from our athletic director. Winter registration is open until November 20th. Don't wait to prepare for a smooth start of the season. Registration dates, details, and eligibility requirements are all on our website under registration on the athletics website. We have one more home event on our turf this year before our teams move into the indoor tracks, rinks, and gyms, and it will be our Thanksgiving kickoff with our Ponder family. It will be, our football team will play Arlington Catholic at 10:00 a.m. on Thanksgiving. Tickets are $8 for students, seniors, and $10 for adults. You can purchase them in advance in the athletics office beginning November 20th. We have a couple of things to celebrate after a successful showing at sectionals. State finals are taking place for some of our Ponders this weekend. The girls' swim team moved up five notches from last year, finishing 15th overall in sectionals. Lily Barker placed third in the 500 Free. The 200 Free Relay placed 12th and qualified for states taking place this weekend. Our boys' cross-country placed seventh overall, and Ryan Oosting won the Division Two Championship and advances to the state finals this weekend. Check out the MIAA website to see start times, locations, and good luck to those individuals who have advanced to states. The boys' soccer had an incredible run in their tournament and advanced to the Division Two North Finals, where they lost to Concord, Carlisle, and Penalty Kex after a scoreless game and two scoreless overtime periods, thanks to the Advocate and ACMI for all the coverage for those unable to attend those events. And it was a great showing of pride and unity and a nice representation of Arlington from all those who were able to be there in person. So, thank you for all of our athletic students who participate in athletics, and we're on to a new season. And that ends the report.
That is a report. Okay. Thank you very much. The consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 18096 dated 11/9/2017, the amount of $775,080.38, and approval of the minutes from the meeting of November 9th, 2017. Mr. Schlickman?
Mr. Chairman, I request we hold the warrant as unconlicted.
Thank you very much. The warrant's been pulled. So, the agenda, the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's no opposition. There's one abstention. You're conflicted, so we'll vote separately on the warrant. Have a motion on the warrant.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Haner, second by Dr. Seuss. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. So, on the first vote, Paul did not abstain, and the second vote, he... Okay, thanks. Okay. Subcommittee liaison reports. Dr. Allison Ampe, budget.
Nothing to report from last week.
That is a great report. Meter Relations.
Ms. Starks asked me to let everyone know that the next meeting is on December 7th from 5:00 to 6:00, and we have an agenda item to discuss with the Arlington Human Rights Committee, how to sort of codify or better work with them in our schools. Codify the relationship.
District Accountability Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
No report.
We do need to meet to talk about the evidence we want for Dr. Bodie's assessment.
Yes. We'll have to schedule.
Yeah, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yep. Facilities. Yep.
So, I have a letter that I'd like to read very quick, that I'd like the approval from the, from the school committee tonight, if you, if you choose. The Arlington Public Schools System is submitting a grant to the Community Preservation Committee for a study of the Chandler Street Side Playground at Hardy, and I'd like to request that we, you know...
Authorize.
Authorize. So, here, let me read the very short letter. And I, I have actually written a much longer letter for this grant application, but this one's very short. The Arlington School Committee is pleased to support the Arlington Public Schools' grant application to the Community Preservation Committee, CPA, for a study of the Chandler Street Playground at Hardy. The current plan to build a sixth classroom addition at Hardy reduces the existing play space area, and importantly, reduces the non-blacktop service area. We are confident that a comprehensive study of the Chandler Street Playground will produce a plan that better utilizes that space and works for all students.
Move to, move to authorize the chair to sign for the committee.
Motion by Mr. Haner, second by Dr. Seuss. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Great.
Okay, I'll sign in a minute. Mr. Carden is not here, so we don't have any, unless there's any report on policy and procedures. Yeah, did you want to report?
No, we have a meeting coming up.
Yeah. School and Roman Task Force, we're kind of no longer meeting. Legal Services Review.
Nothing at this time.
Arlington High School Building Committee. So, we, you want to give a report? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was able to attend the kickoff meeting with the MSBA this afternoon, and basically, they had representatives from the school, including Dr. Bodie, Mr. Denizio, and representatives from Skanska, and also from HMFH. And they basically went through the procedure, they had the agenda included, when you have to turn things in, when are dates of meetings, and notes about different things, you know, do this, don't do this, and, and stuff like this. And it was a good, productive meeting. There was lots of helpful information exchanged, and the rest, we're gonna be getting going very quickly and, and moving forward.
Very quick. Yes, Jennifer?
Just a question. Do we have a significant target date that came up in that meeting? Is there, is there the next target?
There are targets, but I don't, I don't know how to report out on them. So, let's wait, because I don't wanna, you know, there, there's a bunch of meetings that we will be doing stuff at, but I don't, you know, I was listening to the meeting and looking at this, and I can't tell you exactly what it, it, it's nothing that we have to do, it's the whole group, and it's really more for the construct, for the OPM and, and for the designer and stuff.
I remember a previous meeting, and public may not realize this, I mean, we can have done everything that we need to do, but that doesn't mean that we can necessarily advance until some date that the MSBA is meeting, you know, that we're, we're very much reliant on their schedule.
Right. And that's what, this was a lot of their schedule, you know, scheduled, this is when we expect you to have these things done, and, you know, this is when we're meeting, and keep this date open too, and maybe these will change. There isn't anything at this point to announce to the public. That stuff will be coming soon, and that's part of why we've got the website up and running, so we'll have a good way of rolling information out. Again, the website is at ahsbuilding.org, and you can go there, and if you just scroll all the way down to the bottom, you can sign up for the bulletin, and it'll send out news every two to four weeks, giving you updates, or you can just come back and look for them yourselves, so...
Oh, I thought you had a question. Okay.
Nope. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, yeah, thank you, Kirsty. And the next meeting of the HS Building Committee is the fifth, December 5th, at 6:00 in this room. So, it's open to the public. It's a good meeting to go to, to kind of get a sense of what we're doing. December 5th, you got it? Okay, that'd be good. Yes. Yes, we had a little miscommunication. My apologies. Okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Can I get the, can I get the time for the football game?
No.
10:00? 10:00 a.m., yes.
10:00 a.m. Okay. Yep. Okay. Great. Gibbs, Cindy's not here. Warrant committee.
Everything is paid. Could I just ask the committee, is this something that we can eliminate? I'm gonna sign it, they're gonna get paid.
Well, it's on the list, yeah, we can eliminate it. I don't know what's up.
It's a committee of one.
Yeah, we can take it off. Karen can do anything we want. That's how it works. Any liaison reports?
Not, can we go one more week, I mean, one more meeting, because there's a motion I need to bring up about it, and I keep forgetting to...
Makes me nervous.
Leave it, leave it there. Get ready.
Kirsty. She's gonna stick it to me.
We don't meet again till December...
Yeah, she can wait.
7th, right? Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Any liaison reports?
I attended the Stratton's PTO meeting. It was, they, they were discussing fundraising and spending money, and they have a lot of money, and I'm really impressed.
Very good. Announcements, the Stratton Open House is this Sunday at 1:00. 1:00 to 3:00 at the Stratton School, so stop on by and see the new school.
I'd like to announce that the third grade is, third grade classes, three of them from Stratton School, have been working to write their own warrant articles. There'll be a mock town meeting on November 30th at Town Hall, 9:00 to 10:00, where they debate their articles, and I welcome people to come and see their future town meeting members.
On Monday, November 20th, at Restaurante Olivia in Arlington, there will be a fundraiser for the Arlington Educational Foundation. Mr. McNeil will be there, one of our, the honored guests, and I just want to stress how important AEF is to our schools, and we couldn't do half of the really innovative things that we do without their, their support.
We heard that tonight.
Also, Sarah Byrd, our Director of Agents, will be there as well.
Very good, yeah. Future agenda items, yep?
I'd like to have some time to discuss the calendar. Once again, tonight, we've had a conflict with the high school scheduling parent conferences. I, I think these are important things, but it makes it difficult for people to want, to decide where they want to go. And we've brought this up quite a few times, so I'd like to thrash it out sometime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So, actually, I want to make a comment to that, but do you want to add something else? That we had actually talked about that last time, and the parent conferences isn't the same type of conflict as an open house, where you do expect all the parents, because you can organize your conference, you can say... So, I mean, I remember, I remember this coming up, that it wasn't quite the same, you know, conflict is inevitable. Where I really think we have to focus is making sure that these open houses, where all the parents are expected to attend, don't conflict.
Okay, so, all we're doing now is just agenda items.
All right, so, I want to add something.
You didn't post anything.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, on, when we did our goals last year, the goals for this year.
Yep.
They're, one of the goals, the first goal under student achievement, is that we're going to develop a broad-based process review, understand, and adapt a vision of students as learners and global citizens to review by the school committee in, by October 2017. So, it's November, so...
Okay. So, that is, what's the goal number?
It's 1.1.
Okay. Okay. So, we're due a report from Dr. Bodie.
We're due a report, yes. And then we have another report by April 30th of 2018 on some of the specific details of that.
Okay.
According to our goals.
Yeah.